Hello, this is the Wolfborough ZBA Monday, April 3rd, 2023. Meeting. Roll call, we have Chuck and Kate, Audrey, Sarah, Suzanne, and Luke. I'd like to move the agenda around and do the number four, the new business with appointing the vacant member seat and election of officers first.
I don't have an agenda. Yes, you do, I made you copy.
I do.
Yeah, I can appoint her here. I question whether Audrey can sit because she's still within the 30 days and then I see she's asked for rehearing, so I think she-
Talk to him.
The appointed chair is the chair until modified by the board, so yes.
This has nothing to do about whether she's chair or not, Tavis, just sitting at all.
Absolutely, she can sit during the appeal period.
In your opinion? Did you talk to town attorney?
No, I did not talk to the town attorney, but since you're not talking about a case, there's no reason she can't sit.
I don't feel comfortable because I think it's a conflict of interest. We have asked other people to step down for reasons that aren't as serious as the fact that they have a case before us.
I think that's, I think, Sarah, that's why she's going to move the agenda around, so she's going to step down at the end and have her case, is that your intention?
Yes.
To move it around so that, so the case would come last, then she'll step down and she'll be in the audience, and then we'll deal with the case.
You're saying we're going to hear this tonight?
Talk to him. Talk to him. All I did was turn it in, I didn't make any other decisions.
For the point of reference, the board did not even accept jurisdiction over the case that Sarah's concerned about. There is no 30-day appeal period.
Well, what turning the agenda around got to do with it?
I had just always intended to do the appointments and the elections first thing, and when I reviewed this, I didn't notice that going over the rules of procedure was before it, which I don't think should be, because if we're going to do anything, it should be after we do the business.
Oh, I guess it's just some confusion because it was my understanding that we had no business to take care of except for rules of procedure until I saw the agenda, and then, oh.
All the agenda has on it is rules of procedure and minutes that have been continued for four meetings. The new business that was upside down in front of you was presented at 4 o'clock on Friday, and something that the board sans Audrey can consider later this evening or decide to hear at a separate date at the board's appointment.
That's right, you guys can decide not to even look at that tonight.
I'm not comfortable doing this.
Okay, so what do you want to do, Suzanne?
It puts us in a position.
Don't look at me, you guys have to decide.
Yeah, you know, and I like, I really like you and everything, and I think, you know, we get along well as a board, and when we're off the street and we see each other and stuff, but it puts us in, at least it puts, I feel I'm put in a position of not only just as a friendship kind of thing, but as a counterpart to the board for which you're chairman. I don't think we can hold elections. I just soon not go forward with this meeting myself, I just soon not. I didn't know that this was happening, so I'm not prepared to really get into the ups and downs of it, but I just don't think it's good practice to be holding a meeting. And, Tavis, I really don't care what you have to say about it, because you're not having to vote on stuff, and you're not personally involved like we are, so-
Well, it's unfortunate that any of you are personally involved with anything as the ZBA, but that is not my decision at all. All I'm saying to the board members other than Audrey is you have to make a decision on the motion for rehearing within 30 days of last Friday.
That part-
And, at some point, you want to review your minutes, and the only reason this meeting is moving forward is because the chair asked to move forward with the meeting to discuss rules of procedure and minutes. The rest of this has absolutely nothing to do with me, it's wholly board business.
I know, it has nothing to do with the 30 days, it has nothing to do with the prior cases, nothing to do with anything, other than we have to sit here with an applicant that's going to be coming before us again, and I think it's very uncomfortable, and so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Are we obliged to deal with this now?
Not, no.
Yes, you're required to deal with the motion for rehearing within 30 days of this past Friday.
Within 30 days?
Yes, so you can, unfortunately, that is not the April 5th meeting because that is outside the 30 days. So if the remainder of the board members want to schedule a special board meeting to consider a motion for rehearing, that's fine. However, the motion for rehearing is not rehearing the case, it's just whether the board will or will not rehear the case.
It's nothing to do with the case, it's to adjourn the meeting, period.
That's your motion, yeah.
Not, because of the 30-day thing, and because we got this before us.
So you would need a second.
What?
So you would need a second to adjourn the meeting.
Go ahead. I guess, well, I was going to say I would seat an alternate, but Chuck has expired, so I can't really seat him, so it's the four, three of you.
But point of order, there's a motion that has not been seconded, first of all, so it is-
And you two can't, you two can't second.
Why did you think that Chuck expired?
Oh, I'm sorry, well, because he expired in 2023, that would have been March, right?
Technically, he would have to be reappointed to be an alternate, yes.
Okay, but Kate hasn't expired, so I could seat Kate.
Town attorney in the past has said that generally you were there until you were replaced.
That's right, even as an alternate?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just like, stop and think about this, it's like, I'm on the Conservation Commission, the Ad Commission, all these other things, and everybody says, well, okay, you vote in March, so the Board of Selectmen have to appoint people, and they get it in their mind that there's something magic about voting day in March, which means that everybody drops dead and there's nobody in any of the positions until the Board of Selectmen, in the case of appointments, appoint them. They don't get around to doing that till at least the first-
April.
-April meeting, then they have to get it to Amy, then they have to get it to Pat Waterman, then they got to get a letter to the person, then the person has to come in and get sworn in, so it's essentially-
But that's somebody who's been appointed or voted in, and that's not the case with the alternates.
And the alternates for the ZBA are appointed.
So if, if nobody-
So he's still an alternate.
Okay, so in order to unalternate him, we would have to unappoint him if we didn't want him as an alternate anymore?
They're not appointed.
Interesting how the board's flip-flopping on who expires and who doesn't.
They're not, we vote in the alternates.
They're appointed by the board.
By the board.
Right, but if we, that's why, if he expires in '23, I would think he would expire unless we said that we're reappointing him, because otherwise we would have to unappoint him.
Correct.
Which I don't think we would do, not because it's Chuck, but because I don't think that's a process.
Correct.
But for somebody who was voted in or appointed by the selectmen, what you're saying makes complete sense, because we already know they're coming back.
Elected memberships continue until they're reelected or replaced, yes.
Having said that, I-
Why do we need him tonight?
Him who?
Chuck, just to get off on another thing, because-
Actually, I could, I was, well, I would like to have, you know, more of a board than we have, and Kate's here, and she's an alternate, and I can seat her, because she hasn't expired.
Right, there is, if you are stepping away, that still leaves 1, 2, 3, and Kate, which is 4.
Right.
And which is, I made a motion to adjourn that's gotten lost because it didn't get a second, and if it doesn't get a second, I'm leaving, so you won't have a quorum.
Well, if I appoint Kate, there still will be a quorum.
Well, and you'll have to get a ride home. Yeah, I will have to, but- So, good night. You can all deal with this. I just don't feel comfortable with, if we have an issue here with Audrey sitting, I don't feel comfortable with her sitting, especially if we have an appeal.
And I don't like doing the bylaws either, because it's just, it affects the whole board, the bylaws, and I just, this is, this stinks.
Well, for the sake of voting, I'll second the motion.
All in favor? I guess there's now three of us.
Well, Suzanne left, so there's-
Just three of us. I mean, I can vote on this, right?
Did you leave or not?
Well, I don't know, is anyone going to second the motion?
She just did.
She did.
Okay.
So what is the vote?
Motion is to adjourn.
To adjourn.
It's 4-0 to adjourn right now, if you voted.
So, I mean, is there any reason I can't vote on this?
No.
Okay, I would vote to not adjourn.
Okay, so it's 3 to 0, 3 to 1 to adjourn.
I don't think she should be voting. I don't think she should be participating until all of her cases are before us.
So let me just, let me just ask you, if I had a-
Sarah, she doesn't have a case.
If I had a variance-
You dismissed it.
What the [bleep] is this?
Wow, I'll put that in verbatim, madam.
Yeah, you can do that.
If I, if I had a variance going on with this, would I have to, would I have to not sit on the board until my variance was heard?
It's pending, it's going to be pending before us, a motion for rehearing.
Right, it's-
It's pending before us.
It's a pending case, but it's not a case now. It's, does the board want to rehear it or not, that's all it is. She's not voting on that, she's voting to adjourn or not adjourn right now.
It's the chairman of the zoning board filing a motion for rehearing of her case.
Understand. She's voting on adjourning.
So you're saying, Tavis, that there is a fine line, that if you have a conflict or perceive conflict because you have something in front of the board at this very same night, that it doesn't matter for all other subjects until you adjourn.
Just for the record, I'm putting down Suzanne leaving at 7:13.
And you guys can do what you want, but I certainly have been with many boards that have one member who has a case in front of the board, a variance that night, and that person listens to the other cases, and when their case comes up, they step down. So I'm not saying that you should feel that way, I'm just saying that's not all that unusual, and you can feel any way you'd like.
Well, technically, you've adjourned unless there's something else that's going to happen.
That's right. Nope, guess we're done. Thanks, Jake. So I would like to, Kate, would you be willing to sit as an alternate tonight?
Sure, me?
Yes. Kate's, I'm appointing Kate as the alternate tonight.
Great, there you have four members.
All right, appointment of the vacant member seat. So Tim Cronin, are we still on?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Tim Cronin stepped down before his term was up, so we have a vacant seat on the ZBA, and the way that is filled is by a vote of the board to fill that seat until the end of the term that is vacant, which would be next year.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chuck to take Tim's vacant seat.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard, Chuck.
Thank you.
Everybody?
We all said aye. And it's clear to everyone that he is filling in for Tim's seat.
For one year, yes.
For one year.
He's a regular voting member until that term is up.
Correct.
Correct.
Got it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now you have a full five-member board.
That's right. Election of officers, so we have, I call it a secretary, but it's a clerk, chair and vice chair, so would anybody like to make any nominations for any of those positions?
Can I nominate, can I nominate?
Yeah, you're sitting as an alternate tonight.
Can I nominate Audrey?
You can.
You're chair.
Oh, sorry. I nominate Audrey Klein to do another term as chair.
Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor? Speak into the microphone, please.
Aye.
I want to note that I am abstaining.
Yes.
I'm abstaining because I don't believe Audrey should be at the meeting tonight.
And I would be happily glad to accept that, thank you.
So, so, did you vote or abstain?
Yes, yes.
401, Audrey is chair.
Is there a nomination for vice chair?
Chuck, would you consider being vice chair? Do you feel comfortable in your knowledge and time spent that you could do it?
Quite honestly, time spent and so forth, I appreciate the question, but I don't feel like I could step in if I needed to.
Okay.
I'm still a freshman at this, but thank you.
Sarah?
I would respectfully decline. I've been chair, vice chair in the past, but I would respectfully decline, however, I would make a motion to put Suzanne in as, to continue as vice chair.
Sarah, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Suzanne for vice chair. Talk about voting somebody who's not here to a chair seat.
In response to-
Okay, so we have 401 for Audrey to be chair and 500 for Suzanne Ryan to be vice chair.
She does need to accept that, of course, and if she doesn't, we can do this again next time.
And I'd like to respond to what Luca just said. I was looking to become clerk in Tim's place.
Okay.
So I would prefer to do that.
So I'd make a motion to get Sarah Silk become clerk for the zoning board?
I'd second that. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good clerk.
I've been pretty much doing it anyways. Might as well get credit. Thank you for your other nomination, but I had this in mind.
Okay.
I wasn't at the previous meetings, do you all want to do any minutes of the previous meetings, or do you want to wait until next time?
Well, the only minutes we have is way back in November, and the January 9th minutes, which was primarily our rules of procedure minutes.
So it's up to you, again, I wasn't here, so-
The two, the two sets of meetings, meeting minutes that have been carried over have been carried over because I believe Suzanne was going to be adding a bunch to the back end of the draft minutes, so-
Why don't we just postpone it?
Perhaps they can be continued. The meeting minutes of 36, which probably Audrey shouldn't be voting on because it was relative to her case-
Right.
-were sent out to everyone in draft. The only comments I did receive were from Kate, and those comments have been amended. It was relative to the vote, so even though they're not on the agenda, the board can vote on them, because you've all seen them, or they can all be continued forward.
Do we have to make a motion to continue them?
If you don't, if, well, you can either motion or not motion, if you don't motion, they'll just continue forward.
Well, I'll make a motion to table them, just to be neat about the process.
Second.
Thank you.
Are we tabling all of them, all three now?
Yes.
We have the 14th of November, the 9th of January listed on our agenda for tonight.
Correct, I specifically didn't put on the 36 minutes because I wasn't sure how that was going to sort out, but yes, functionally speaking, to answer the question, yes, all three sets will be moving forward.
So I'm going to recuse myself, would you as clerk take over the running of the meeting?
Yes, for, for the rest of the items on the agenda? I will, we were getting ready to table those minutes.
Okay.
I made the motion, and Luke seconded it, so-
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, Luke, how do you vote on that?
Yes.
What's the question?
Tabling the minutes?
Tabling the minutes from November 14th and January 9th until our next meeting? Okay, that's, and Chuck?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's four positives, and Audrey is abstaining.
So the only other thing, the only other thing that's not technically on the agenda is the piece of paperwork that's in front of everyone other than the chair, it's not on the agenda because it was going to be brought up under miscellaneous in communications, that is a motion for rehearing. For the benefit of the board, the motion for rehearing is simply that, is someone requesting a motion for the board to reconsider its vote on case 01AAD23 from March 6, 2023. This is not a hearing tonight, it's not noticed as such, this is only to decide whether the board does or does not want to reopen the case to which the board decided it did not have jurisdiction over the appeal of a planning board decision. So there's, there's really only two options.
I'm going to make a motion to deny the rehearing, based on the, the original reasons for denying it, that we don't have jurisdiction, we sought town council, the applicant has the ability to, through the court system, to get remediation in this matter, so therefore I'm going to say motion to deny rehearing.
Second the motion.
Okay, for discussion.
Sure.
Now that this warrant article, along with all the other warrant articles from 2 through 10, have not been voted in, is that not another reason for not doing the rehearing?
To answer your question specifically, I don't even know what the outcome would be if the board decided to hear it and decide in case of the appellant, because the warrant article is dead and gone, I don't know what the outcome would be, perhaps a letter from the zoning board admonishing, quote-unquote, "the planning board." What this does do is this is a procedural step that the applicant needs to go through, should the applicant want to go to the court level, as identified in the motion. So if the board were to continue with its motion as approved, the applicant would then have the ability under statute to go to higher court. It will, whether you hear or don't hear this case, the zoning article is dead.
I'm sorry, whether we hear it or don't hear it, what?
The zoning article is dead.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, Chuck? Kate?
No, I, I would support a motion for a rehearing.
You would support?
I would support it, yeah.
Motion to what? I'm sorry, can't-
For the, this, this is the motion for a rehearing.
It is a motion for rehearing.
Right.
And there's a motion on the floor to deny the motion.
Yes, I know. I do not vote to deny it. It's been seconded, right?
Yes, I second it.
By Luke?
Yeah.
We made the motion, and-
I second it.
Chuck seconded it, yes.
To be clear, the board has not heard it per se yet. The last decision was that the board didn't have jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Correct, which was at the advice of counsel.
I understand.
No, I, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, yeah, I guess I'd just end up tonight having a discussion with me, myself, and I, since everybody else is in a different perspective. I spent a lot of time reading the, thank you, the rules and the jurisdiction and how the zoning board can only respond to a particular property or particular case, and one of the things in my mind was that basically the planning board decided on something that's not one property, but a block of them, almost like a whole class of things, and I, and it seemed to me that there's grounds for further discussion.
Say that again?
Yeah.
I think I got lost way through your discussion.
Well, the-
I remember the attorney saying that there was no standing because there was no application for a particular law under that particular zoning change at that time, because it hadn't been voted in.
Right.
Okay, now I'm trying to reconcile that with what you just said.
Well, I'm thinking about this, okay, so there isn't a specific case, but this basically-
Can you, can you get closer to your microphone, because I can't hear you?
The planning, the-
No, pull it closer to you.
Sorry.
There you go.
The planning board's action, which was appealed, did not refer to a particular piece of property or particular case, but what I'm saying is that, to me, it was like a category of particular cases or future particular cases, and it seemed to me that it's not a particular case, but it results in affecting a whole category of the same kind of case.
So you're referring like a whole zone when you say a whole category?
Well, depending on, I mean, I don't have the planning board's action in front of me, although I read it quite a few times. Now, I'm just wondering whether, whether the, a particular case could represent, I mean, we don't have a particular case, but whether a category of cases could represent a particular kind of property or dilemma or action, do you know what I mean?
What the attorney spoke to was the legislative function of the planning board, and when the planning board is pursuing its legislative function, that is not appealable to the zoning board of adjustment.
Okay.
So regardless of one property or 35 million properties, the attorney's position was not only is it relative to the legislative function, but specifically, the comment was, it doesn't matter how the planning board came to the conclusion of its legislative function, that is not a topic appealable to the zoning board.
Okay.
The only, the only comment I'd make on that line, it would be like, with the way, the way I'm understanding what you're saying, Kate, it'd be like, if we were a court, if we were, if we were an elected, if we were the Supreme Court, let's say, and we hear that Congress is about to make a new rule, we say, you know what, we really don't like that rule, how it's going to affect potential cases in the future, therefore, we're going to step in and we're going to say, we're going to take this on. And I think what Tavis just said is that the legislative body needs to be able to make a decision, and then it gets tested, that decision gets tested by us, when an applicant comes before us and says, I want to do this, and then we say, when we are able to look at the, what the legislative body has said, interpret it, and then decide if that applies to that case or doesn't apply to that case, either deny it or allow it. That's how I see it, I understand exactly how you see it too, you made a very eloquent point, so I respect that.
Okay, and, and I'm going to weigh in with, I see this is an appeal, but we have already been told we didn't have jurisdiction, and I think the thing that makes this more moot is the fact that none of the entire warrant articles 2 through 10 passed, so essentially, they don't exist for our zoning at this point. So I don't see how we can do anything but vote not to hear this, because the whole case is moot because that zoning doesn't exist now. That's my take on it.
So it's a vote?
Yeah, I was just going to wait for her, she looked like she maybe was going to say something else.
I guess I'd like to read the second page of-
Yep. Are you going to read it aloud?
Pardon me?
Are you just reading it personally, or are you going to read it aloud?
Do I want to read it aloud?
It's up to you, you have the floor.
Thanks. I'm just, this is what we just got before us tonight, right, yeah.
Correct.
It says, "This is an appeal of the planning board's jurisdiction to interpret the zoning ordinance when it voted to accept the language in warrant article saying that 175 dash 40, 143 through 145 is controlling language for all affected base zoning districts, which has the effect of interpreting the zoning ordinance conversely from decades of administrative gloss, that is past practice, while at the same time purported to not change anything but just move sections around. Zoning enforcement that has created an administrative gloss over decades may not be changed except by a change in the law, not by a reinterpretation by any board or any officer. The planning board illegally and unreasonably interpreted the zoning ordinance when accepting the warrant article so worded." It's true, the warrant article is dead now. It's true, the warrant article is dead now, we know that. Um, "Under the implied and inherent powers of the ZBA, the ZBA has a duty to correct this injustice." So I'm in favor of further study on this.
There, I think that any issue there is relative to noticing and whatnot should first be, um, looked into by the applicant with, uh, the person that was supposed to do notification. And if that wasn't corrected and done in a timely manner, and it was not done in the correct manner, then that, that person's super, media supervisor should be notified, and whether there is any options to go to, um, court if there is indeed a problem with notification and notification that was perhaps incorrect, then I think that can go to Superior Court, can it not?
In this particular case, counsel has weighed in and agreed that the town didn't follow the appropriate noticing period. However, with the fact that the Zoning Board of Appeals never had a public hearing, there was no actual failure to notice appropriately because there was no hearing.
And why did the ZBA members not get benefit of anything the council had to say about this?
Because this came in at 4 o'clock on Friday.
You don't see that as a disadvantage to the ZBA to be
Not at all, because this is simply a question for a motion for rehearing.
I think we have been
I suppose the question would be, how would the ZBA propose to be approached as a group in an unnoticed meeting prior to 7 o'clock this evening, when you were scheduled to meet anyway?
I think it's unfortunate that the ZBA didn't have all of the adequate information before we got here, meaning at least this amount of information. And if town council had been asked any opinion about this, I think it's unfortunate that the board members weren't advised so that we would be able to have some degree of certainty when we go to make our vote, based on the fact that we've already talked to town attorney about this issue.
Absolutely. Count, town council has already spoken to the question at hand, yes.
I know, it's just unfortunate we don't have that information beforehand.
No, town council has already been asked the question at hand.
Okay. All right, we have a, um, question on the floor. Luke?
Yeah, I motioned
No, a vote.
Yeah, uh, yes. Deny rehearing.
Excuse me?
Yes, to deny.
Yes. What's the motion?
To deny the motion for rehearing.
Motion is to deny the rehearing.
Oh, yes. Kate?
I don't know.
Chuck?
Yes, in favor, to deny.
And I find that I will have to vote yes for denial as well.
3-1, motion carried. I'll put a notice of decision together to that effect.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Aye.
What's that?
To adjourn.
Fine.
And you voted yes?
Yes, yes.
And I vote yes.